Thank you. I'd like to reconvene the open session of the Coventry School Committee. I have 6:14. And I'd like everybody to have a moment as we consider the work before us this evening. Thank you. And I believe, Mrs. Colonian, if you could honor us with reading the mission for Coventry Public Schools.
Yeah, hold on, I gotta get my thing up here. Oh, boy, hold on. I didn't realize I was the one reading today. Does somebody want to grab it? Because I don't have my program on.
Maybe I can do the honors.
Oh, good, okay.
I never do.
There you go.
All right. The mission of Coventry Public Schools is to inspire, support, and challenge all students in an inclusive community to be critical thinkers, effective communicators, reflective learners, responsible individuals, and global citizens.
Thank you, Kathy. I'll do it on Thursday.
Okay. And so I'd just like the public to know that the school committee did meet an executive session for about a half hour, at which point we talked about the CTA, the Coventry Teacher Alliance, contract, and no votes were taken in executive session. That being said, is there a move to seal the minutes of the executive session?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Looks like it's a five to zero vote. Motion carries. Moving on to the public agenda. The first item for our consideration is the contract, the Coventry Teachers Alliance discussion and vote. Are there any questions or comments that any of the school committee members would like to make? And I'll start with Mr. Florio.
Madam Chair, I think this is a great contract. We're saving $500,000 plus we'll be saving next year and probably the year after that with three times. I think it's a good contract, and I think it's, I'm gonna vote yes on it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Florio. Mr. Mari.
You're welcome.
I don't have any questions or comments at this time.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Colonian? I would have to echo Dave. I think it's a great contract. I think it was, it was done. They did what they needed to do. They came back to the table like they always do, and I'm gonna vote yes. Mr. Pearson.
No comments at this time.
Mr. Levis, before we move, did you want to speak to this at all?
Just quickly, I just want to, again, thank the teachers for coming back to the table. You know, I wanna, I was very frustrated the other night when I watched the council, knowing that we had given answers. There's a difference between answering questions and not liking the answer. But I want to get this off the table. I'm hoping that, you know, when we go, when you guys go and vote, then the focus can be on the town because this, we did this in agreement with the municipality about everybody opening up contracts. And we did that. And we did this in, expedited this in three weeks. Remember, we voted on this March 12th originally. It was gonna go to the council on March 16th. So, like I said, I'm tired of being in the defensive position. I believe the council will support it, but I think tonight we're going to do this, you know, exercise, and then we'll, our plan is to get the signed contract documents to the council tomorrow. And I'm hoping that they'll bring it before Monday night. I think it's important because I don't know where we'd get a half million dollars. And there's additional savings as we go through the three years. So I appreciate the committee taking the time to do this, to come back and to revisit this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levis. And I will reiterate from what my committee has said, that I believe in this contract. It was done with the best intentions, and I want to thank all the parties involved that work on this. And if it mean us having to go through these steps again tonight, I am perfectly okay with that. And so I look forward to a motion from the committee.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to accept the Coventry Teachers Alliance contract.
I second the motion. And Mrs. McDonald, if you could ask for a roll call, so we'll get a roll call vote here.
Kathy Patnold?
Yes.
Dave Florio?
Yes.
Luke Mari?
Yes.
Donna Colonian?
Yes.
James Pearson?
Yes.
Thank you all. That motion carries five to zero. I guess we can move.
Can I, can I say one thing? Do you mind if I say one thing, Ms. Patnold? That we're gonna try to get signatures tomorrow morning. Donna McDonald has graciously offered to be a courier, and we'll coordinate that not too early in the morning, but hopefully we can track people down tomorrow. We'll do it using appropriate social distancing. And, but we would like to get these signed so I can get it over to the council. So we'll work out details. If there's an issue, I could come by tonight. You want to see my face tonight, so. Anyways, and the other thing I wanted to say is.
Sorry, sorry.
The other thing I wanted to say was that, as we go into the public, we're in the public session, but questions around the budget, there is a raise your hand button feature, and we'd ask people to raise their hand, and then Jim Murphy will notify the chair that somebody has raised their hand for a question, and that will, during that time. So just to process, you know, this is only our second, I believe, Zoom meeting, so we're still working through the kinks, but we want to make sure that we give everybody an opportunity to answer, ask questions in an orderly fashion. So thank you.
Mr. Levis.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Levis. I know that. Mr. Florio, what's up?
I just want to apologize because I couldn't get into the Zoom meeting this evening.
That's okay.
I don't know. Okay.
You're here now, Dave. That's all that matters.
That's it. That's it.
As long as, Dave, as long as you're in here, participate, that's all we need. Even though we're missing your lovely face. That being said, I don't have much.
Lovely is great.
I know that we have all seen the budget presentation that was put together by our budget director, Sarah. I think it was, the first reiteration was on May 6th. Hopefully you have had time to review it. Hopefully the public who is listening and watching tonight has seen it. It's a very succinct, easily understood PowerPoint presentation that basically goes through all of the increases that the school department will face in the upcoming budget for '21. I don't know, Sarah, did you want to speak to anything before the public starts to talk? I'll give you the floor if you'd like that.
Oh, I think, Mr. Levis, did you want to start? And then?
Ladies first.
So we, I think we kind of decided not to, not to go through the presentation since we just went through it in detail last week. But the long, long and short of it is that the budget that we put together was before COVID came to surface. And the part that I want to stress is that while on Thursday you will see, you know, a financial projection of where I think we're gonna end FY '20, I think it's important to note that what is coming down the pipeline in FY '21 is everybody's best guess right now. And, and we should prepare, just like you would prepare your homes, you know, start making sure that you're saving money, validating resources, so that if funds from state is cut further, or federal is impacted, or even local, that we're prepared for that. So the anticipation that we will have significant increases in expenses next year, you know, I did outline those in the slides, but we're looking at everything from potential increased costs in salaries for smaller class sizes, to sanitation, to supplies for sanitation, equipment for sanitation, transportation, you know, where we could be facing limits on buses. So I, I want everybody to keep in mind that whatever comes out of projected savings for FY '20, the budget that we presented was to fund the operations as they exist. We expect operations to change, and we will be needing to have a frequent communication, and also identify where those funds are gonna come from to take care of any additional costs that come down the pipe. So that's really the highlight. So let Mr. Levis say whatever he would like to add to that, and then I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Sarah. Mr. Levis.
Sure, I'll be brief. And we do have the, just, you know, we have the PowerPoint, but we want to give as much time to the public. So, you know, we, you know, again, I don't want to be indecisive, but I feel that if we ask questions and if we can put, you know, Jim Murphy has the capability of putting it up, so if we needed to highlight an area or a question, we can do that very quickly. So I just wanted to say again that, just to support what Sarah had said, I think we've been putting this budget together since September, October. We've been very transparent with the town. We've worked with the town manager, met every single week. We haven't met this week yet, but we will, we will probably be meeting. We hope to meet. And we've been communicating with, with not only the manager, but we also had, have had communication with the council leadership. And I want to say that, you know, this, this budget includes, and I think Mr. Pearson said at one of our meetings, that to remember that this budget does include cuts of, you know, I think 1.5 million we're at right now. That includes half a million dollars from negotiations. And so we've been very transparent, and the reason we have this meeting here is because we felt that the way the meeting was, I don't know about you, but just seeing Mr. Wazika sitting there, and then having everybody call in, not know, not knowing who's speaking, and the fact that we didn't really receive any questions on our budget. We're always criticized about how we're the largest part of the consumer. I hope that sends a message to the council. I believe it does. But I wanted to be transparent even further. We had conversations, like, committee supports this, that there's an opportunity for the public and the council and the school committee to ask questions or have opinions, and that we move forward. And remember, Monday night, I believe, I could be wrong, but Monday night, the council's supposed to put forward a budget. And, and the only person, I believe she's on this call tonight, but the only part of this meeting, the only person that's asked a question from the council about the budget has been Dr. Dixon. And we've had three, maybe four meetings with the council and the public. So, again, we just want to have an opportunity, and if you have any questions, we'll do the best we can to answer them. If we can't, we'll get an answer back out to the public. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Yeah, and finally, I just wanted to thank Mr. Levis for the idea of having this town hall format for the public. Obviously, I see that there's 51 people on the call on our Zoom meeting that have joined us, so I am very hopeful that they'll have some questions that can be fielded by Mr. Levis and Mrs. Minjirelli, or any of the school committee members. So that being said, Jim, if you could let us know if anybody has their hand up, and I just want to make sure that if someone does, is unmuted so they can ask their question, I would ask them to state their name and their address for the record so that our clerk, Donna McDonald, can put that into the record. So that being said, I guess you have to tell us, Jim.
I don't see anybody yet.
Okay.
I don't want to, maybe some of the school committee members want to have a say or make a comment. Again, it's not my decision, but I think it's a good opportunity. I know the other night, I was disappointed that after we did our presentation, the school committee wasn't asked if they wanted to make any statements, and we moved right into the town budget. I had texted Mr. Wazika, and he did afterwards ask, but I think it's important to, you know, that presentation wasn't just myself and Sarah. That was the school department presentation. So I think this is an opportunity, again, it's your meeting, but I think if the council, the school committee has any comments they want to make, this would be an appropriate time, too.
So I'm gonna start with Mr. Florio. Did you have any comments, questions about our upcoming budget?
I do, Madam Chair. I've spoken to, I spoke to Mr. Cody the night after the vote, and we spoke at length. And I'm hopeful that they're going to vote for this contract. And I want to emphasize that we need the 1.8 million from the town. And we can't go with just the contract cuts. We, we have to, we need that 1.8 million for various needs that Mr. Levis can reiterate if he chooses. There's a long laundry list of them, from PPEs to face masks, to social distancing. And I don't know what that looks like yet. And I think Mr. Levis is starting to get a handle on what that looks like, but we really, we really don't know what the first day of school is gonna look like. And it'd be, we need more maintenance people, and we need that money. We really do. We actually really need that money. And the point is, it's not Dave Florio that's asking for it, or the school committee that's asking for it. It's because we actually care about kids, and we don't want to see any child die because we couldn't do the proper thing. We couldn't, we couldn't have that janitor wipe, wipe the door, wipe, wipe the handle on the door before that child opened the door because he caught COVID virus because of that. We, we need, we need that money, and we need the council to support our schools. No question about it. And, you know, it's a large voting block. Parents, some teenage children over 18, or it's over 16 eligible to vote, teachers, SRP people. We have, we have a lot of, we have a lot of, we have a lot of people we represent, and we need that money. So I just want to let you know, I spoke to the council, I spoke to Kerry McGee, and I spoke to Gary Cody, and they're not really sure, they're not sure if the, if, in their opinion, the taxpayer can afford it. But I really do believe for, for the kid, for safety reasons, they should support it. So that's my comment. Miss Patnold?
Thank you, Mr. Florio. I just want to reiterate that the budget that we are proposing is a pre-COVID budget. We have absolutely no idea how much more funding we may or may not need to, if schools in fact reopen in the fall. So the amount of money, the 1.8 that we're asking for, roundabout from the town, is really for all kinds of things that we just need. If COVID-19 had never reared its ugly head, this would still be the budget that we will be being put forward. And so the logic that, you know, we need this money to keep our kids safe is not really the issue here. We're gonna have to do that with whatever money that we might be able to free up that might come from the federal government, that will be for purely COVID-19 expenditures. And we all know that some of that is gonna be filtering down. The state has gotten some of it. We still don't know how much of that will be given to us as a district to do some of what you were talking about, Mr. Florio. So, and again, that's just a fact of life. This, we don't even know what it'll look like in the fall. But one thing is for sure, whether we have a hybrid system of some kids doing remote still, some kids in school, we are going to need this money, this 1.8 from the town, from our townspeople, if we are going to open schools, whichever, whatever way they look. We are still going to need teachers teaching our children. We are still gonna need all of the things that go forward with running a school district. So I just wanted to make sure that people know that this is definitely a pre-COVID-19 budget. It has nothing really, quite honestly, to do with the disaster we are in, that's in front of us. But that's just my little spiel. So from Dave, I guess we can go to Luke. Any comments, questions, concerns?
I just want to reiterate before I speak that if anybody wants to chime in, raise their hands and ask a question, I'll stop and let anybody interject because this meeting should be about public participation. I get frustrated because it, you know, to me, this is a larger issue about leadership. And pre-COVID, last year, best economy we've ever had, arguably. But, you know, the numbers speak for themselves. We had low unemployment, low interest rates to borrow money. We have, the economy's chugging along, and we're in this conversation about budget again, trying to make cuts, right? I think the conversation was going in that direction at the turn of the year, and I'm not quite convinced that COVID has changed it all that much, except for the town has made some, has made cuts, but it's really cuts in stuff that really can be cut, right? The parks programming is gonna have to be cut anyway, some of the new positions they wanted. On our side, just so people understand, we wouldn't have to ask for so much had the state not, you know, made their calculation, and now we're $900,000 less than last year. So I get frustrated because the math doesn't lie. The math stays the same. We needed the money before, we need the money now. If anything, we need the money more because we don't, yeah, we do have the big unknown. I know people are hurting. I pay taxes, my home got reevaluated. I'm one of the unlucky ones. I went out quite a bit. Great for my house value, bad for me tax-wise. I get it, I empathize with everybody. It's going to pain me, too. I work in this town, I have two kids who go to the school system. I empathize with every, anybody who gets financially hit. But what people need to understand is, you know, responsible leadership comes with doing the math and basing it on the numbers and the data that we have. It's irresponsible if we go into the next council meetings, and some, and the council chooses to arbitrarily cut the numbers that we've presented because we feel our expert financial person, our finance director, who's run the numbers, is presenting a fair budget. And we've done everything we could over the past year through virtual net metering and the energy improvements, some stuff that's gonna be coming up this week as far as the light improvements and some energy savings there, to renegotiating the contract, to try to scoop as much of those savings as we can this year. We've done the responsible leadership thing, I think, as a school committee and a district. I get very frustrated on the other side because I don't see that. I see a lot of talk, but when we came out of last year, is my understanding the town is going to find additional savings as well, not just make straight-line cuts to parks and all the other things, the services that go out to the community. Because things like parks, as we know, you know, fees, you know, you're, a fee of $25 to send to summer camp may not be big for me, but for somebody who makes minimum wage, it's a lot more. So trying to place additional burdens on our populace where they already pay those tax dollars and make these cuts, it all comes out of the shuffle. It all comes down to the taxpayer having to pay that money. And then the cost has just shifted from one category to another. So again, this year, we see a budget where we're not seeing any increases, or we're trying to, the council is really trying to wedge this down to zero. And it's really based on votes. Can we get the votes to muster? Instead of educating the people on why this is responsible leadership and responsible government, we choose to just placate and take what I consider the easy road of saying, yeah, nobody wants to raise taxes? Fine, let's not raise taxes. But is that the responsible thing to do? So structurally, we're gonna pay for it. If we don't pay for it this year, next year we'll be at a 4%. And then we're wondering how we get there again. And school's gonna be in another deficit scenario. And just so people remember, as I'll remind them, last year we went through that budget cycle, we had kids leaving the district. Every time a kid leaves the district, it creates a budget hole. So we're, we're counteracting ourselves in this whole thing. Because every time we waffle and we come out with an irresponsible budget, it pushes other kids out of district, which creates additional budget holes, and it creates more gaps that we have to fill. So I just urge people, if you, you know, if you're talking about it with your neighbor, anybody on this call, anybody who's watching the recording later on, to communicate with your neighbors about why it's responsible to actually look at the data and make certain decisions, even though they may be painful now. It'll eventually pay off in the future. Everyone wants the now, I want the now. I don't want to pay extra, but that's just the way it is. And, you know, I, I don't know how to explain it, but it's like my gas bill. My gas bill, although lately it's gone down, most of the time it's gone up. So a lot of expenses go up. But I just, you know, I just get very frustrated at this whole situation because here we are again. And it's, we can blame it on the COVID, and it is a tough situation. But my, I don't have a crystal ball, but my guess is when this situation comes to a, comes to an end here, or at least declines and the economy comes back, the economy's gonna bounce pretty quickly. We know why this happened. We know that a lot of people are out temporarily. We know that those numbers will rebound, unlike the 2008 issue where we knew that that was gonna be a long-term situation. We had to buckle in. This is probably more of an acute situation. So I think the short-sighted thing to do is just pull back the reins at the last second at the expense of next year. So I'm, you know, I would urge anybody who's out there communicating to communicate with the council. I cannot express enough how much a letter matters. Communicate directly with council on your position. Send an email, send a letter, and the reasons why we need to support this budget and it's responsible government. So sorry for the long-winded, but I have to get that off my chest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mari. It wasn't long-winded. Mrs. Colonian?
I agree with Luke. A lot of what he said is true. It's frustrating, we're here every single year. And I know, Luke, you weren't here two years ago, or three years ago, or even four years ago, but it seems like we're in this position every year where we have to fight for our budget. And I think Sarah and Craig have been very straightforward throughout this whole season, throughout the whole school, school year, really. You've, you've come and you said, this is what the, you know, we've got that update every single week or every single meeting, and, I mean, no one from the council was there to, you know, to ask questions. And I know that that was brought up to the council. You gave your budget, you know, so they knew what we were asking for. They know what we need in order to run our schools. And now that we've got the contract here, and the teachers stepped up and said, okay, so we gotta, we've gotta open this up because, you know, we're gonna give back something to help out, because everybody said they were gonna open up and give back. They did that, and as Luke said, I think that they wanted to have a zero increase way before COVID. I just think that this was just an excuse to say, well, we've got this now, we have to be a zero. But as you said, it's not responsible. That's like me saying, I'm not gonna pay, you know, I need to pay my bills. I've done everything I can to cut, but these bills still need to be paid. And what am I gonna do? You know, I can't just say, well, I'm not gonna pay them, or, you know, or just cut back to the bare minimum where, you know, you end up not taking care of your home or something like that, and it just ends up snowballing. So, you know, all I can say is that I think that we, as a district, did our best with everything. And, you know, I'm hoping this budget does pass because it needs to. You know, they need to not go for a zero increase. I don't want to pay taxes anymore than anybody else does. I don't have kids in the school system. I don't use parks and recs, but there are people out there that do, that need those services, you know? Like you said, Mr. Mari, you know, somebody that can just pay $25 to have their kids go to summer camp, and now they have to scurry around and try to find, you know, care. And who knows if they can find care, but it's just, it's a lot. Anyway, that's, that's me getting my stuff off my chest. So I'm done.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Colonian. I would like to make one comment about your remarks, and that is that I'm, I'm, I want to believe that pre-COVID. I want to believe that pre-COVID, the town manager and the finance director, working with our finance person and our superintendent, were prepared to give us the 1.8 million that we needed. I do believe that. And they knew that we were going back to our union to make that $500,000 cut that we needed just so that we could get the 1.8 to work. And not just the 1.8, we cut 1.5 from our budget. And so I think, I think last year was a good lesson for this town. I do think that when this community unites for schools, people come out and vote for schools. I personally think that if the town council leaves our budget alone and we go forward with our referendum, and they do not try to cut the 1.8 million, that this community will unite behind schools again. I am hopeful that that happens. And for the town council to do some kind of just blunt cut from that 1.8 and then throw that on the town to try to do a referendum that says the schools will not be able to exist without this money, I think there will be backlash. I think the referendum would fail. And I think the town council has learned that lesson from last year. So I am hopeful that the town council is cognizant to the fact that when you get a, when you unite a community, even in a COVID-19 situation, they also know what our teachers have done to keep their kids on track with remote learning. And I think they realize that this community is not denigrating our teachers and our public schools. They are praising us and praising the job that teachers are doing. So in this environment, I think if they cut our budget to level funding or perhaps just a little more than level funding, there will be a grassroots effort made to go against that budget. So that's, that's my feeling on the matter, so I just wanted to say that.
Thanks. And I didn't mean to imply that Mr. Wazika and the finance director, I know they worked very closely with Sarah and Craig. I, you know, I know that. So I, and I understand that it's, you know, it's frustrating for Mr. Wazika too because he's going to lose his budget, you know, and he's going to try and do what he needs to do. So I get it. I understand.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Pearson, your comments or questions?
I don't want to pretend to know what the town council is going to do, but the town manager, interim town manager, sorry, has been very clear about his desire to present some kind of 0% increase in the budget, which I think, I don't know. I don't have a lot of confidence when I hear something like that because I don't think a lot of thought's been put into it, no matter, no matter what they say. I don't want to go on about community supporting the budget. We haven't even seen the budget from the council yet. We don't know what they're going to propose. Once that is main, known to us in the community, I think the chips will fall where they may and the community will, will support, support it one, one way or not support it if they disagree with it. You know, we still have a big question mark lingering in the air here with our school budget in that we have to make cuts. And I'd like to hear more about where those cuts are coming from because that, I don't, again, I missed a couple of meetings due to some health issues, but I don't recall that being discussed. Where are we cutting? Where are we getting this, this $1.5 million? And if there's no answer yet, then there's no answer, but I think the community deserves to know.
So I think, yeah, sorry, I just had to shoo my kids out of the room here. But so it's a, it's a little tough right now because we're obviously waiting on the council to take action. We have 458,000 projected savings from the new contract. We have about 111,000 from the early retire, not early retirement, but
Just retirement, yeah.
Your retirement incentive that was offered. I'm just trying to flip through that page. We also will be bringing forward layoffs based on staffing patterns. As we went through and reviewed class enrollment, we identified areas that we thought that we could reduce FTEs in order to meet the current class needs. So that is also included, and we'll be discussing that more on Thursday night. And then we did really kind of go through the line item budgets. We don't have a lot of big items that we can just pull out. So we tried to remove items, or I shouldn't even say remove, narrow things down as much as possible with some expectation of some of the savings from electricity, sorry, from the natural gas coming in this budget. We also did switch the propane contract last year, so I did kind of squeeze down some of those numbers. And then we really truly went through and said, where in the supplies, equipment and whatnot can we narrow? But the big items in our budget, we can't control. Those are the transportation, the added district, the salaries and benefits. So I actually think we have a pretty good, realistic handle on reducing that 1.5 million. If the contract does not pass, we will be needing to look for additional funds absolutely to cover that. And then whatever comes out as new expenses that we need to cover going forward, that will require going back to the drawing board as well. But for that initial 1.5 cut, I feel like we're pretty well-prepared for that, assuming the contract is approved and, you know, assuming some action is, takes place on Thursday night.
Going back to the COVID-19 related expenses, I know we're talking about next budget, not necessarily this budget, but yeah, I think that's going to be a significant challenge because we don't know what the state is proposing yet for measures we have to take, additional equipment, additional resources, et cetera. But seeing how the state right now is facing an $800 million, last I heard, $800 million shortfall in their budget. And with our governor's tendency to enjoy scooping from other programs to fill holes in her budget, I think we're going to be in a precarious situation where these expenses get out of control. We're not going to be able to fund them.
Can I, can I speak to that?
I guess that was a statement more than a question, but, yeah, go ahead, Craig.
Well, I was just going to say that, so we've been meeting, the superintendents have been meeting regular basis with a liaison to the governor's office. His name's Kevin Gallagher, and also with RIDE leadership. And again, take it with a grain of salt, but I think an important part, and I think many people have made that, that point tonight, is that we, this budget we need moving forward was pre-COVID-19. There's going to be a lot of pressure. It's been very clear. And people are frustrated. I know our administrators, I'm sure they're getting it from parents and teachers. People want answers. What's the plan going to look like? And we just don't know. But what's been very clear is that there's going to be a significant push to get at least elementary school students in school in the fall, or at least have the opportunity for them to attend school. And I, so my concern is if we don't get this funding, which we, again, that's why we're having tonight, but to be as transparent as we can be. And, you know, your question about where the cuts are, last year we said we knew we needed to cut X number, you know, 1.7 million dollars at one point if we weren't level funded or if the budget didn't pass. We had no idea. You know, we had all these crazy ideas that were potential, but like double sessions. I don't even know how that would fly, but that was the only way we could cut like $2 million. Our 1.5 is pretty concrete, as long as the contract passed. But if we don't get this funding, because we know next year's going to cost more, and we have to do it safely. I don't want to go to the parent, to this community and say, we cannot open school because we don't have the resources to do it safely. Because the whole idea is to get parents back to work. With young children, have the opportunity to go to school so parents can go back to work. And that's, that's a message that we've heard consistently from the governor's office. Again, you know, in some of the comments that have been made, again, none of this is in writing, but comments have been made of maybe having one teacher with 10 to 15 students. Making sure that we sanitize everything in our building that has heat contact, doorknobs, desks, bathrooms, every hour, on the hour at least, at a minimum. Well, think about our high school. We have one custodian in there, in our middle school, one custodian to start the day. So we're looking at, there's no way that I could see us opening school with, if we don't get this budget and additional costs. As Sarah had said, the money that we do save, and those savings we'll discuss Thursday night, but there's some potential savings in there that may not come to fruition. We're going to need whatever resources we get from the department, you know, from the government, whatever resources we can come to, you know, save, just to do those additional. And again, I want to be very transparent tonight, saying that if we don't get the resources that we need now just to keep functioning pre-COVID-19, I don't know how we're going to do the addition, the number of custodians and all the unanticipated costs. I mean, transportation, how do you transport kids to school on a bus that has 72 kids? You don't. We're going to have to look at different ways of transporting. They're not going to have students eat in cafeterias, which means students would eat in classrooms. Well, it's different supervising students with a couple of people in a cafeteria versus every single classroom. These are just some things I'm throwing out there. So we're going to have to do scenario planning. We're going to put a task force together to look at those potential scenarios. But also, we have to associate costs with those potential scenarios. And so
I know that Cranston has put together a task force and they're bringing in not only, you know, representatives from the school buildings, but also community members. Is that something you're planning to do?
Definitely. We talked about, I don't know when we talked about that. Was it today, Sarah? A little bit, yes. I mean, the days blur together. We've talked, we talked about that. We'll be coming forward. We'll have school committee. We'll be, you know, I'll probably get, we'll get some feedback from, from the school committee in terms of what your thoughts are. My feeling is that we pull that together sooner than later. And then we'll have to have not just an overarching task force for the district, but we'll have to have a task force that focuses on elementary, middle, because their buildings are different. And what the governor's office was saying is they could foresee that maybe some buildings are able to open where others aren't. We have to remember, in terms of the cleanliness piece and sanitation, some of our older elementary schools that have very little storage make it much more difficult. So we're going to have a lot of challenges. And, you know, RIDE has laid this out, the governor's office laid it out, that maybe not everybody will open easier than others. And then, then with this, a whole equity issue. But what I can say is if we don't get, if we don't receive the funding we need now, how do, and we have to use the additional funding we have or savings just to backfill. I, you know, we're not going to open schools unless we can do it safely, you know? You know, the government, the governor's office is even saying, even when we do this, districts may, buildings may have to close for 14 days. The whole state may have to close down the road if things spike. So we're in a whole new world and, you know, we were able to be thrown into this and our educators, our complete staff, our community has really rallied. But now we have to plan. We have to take the time and due diligence and plan for the unknown, which is going to be extremely challenging. So that's why this budget is so important and getting this message out there is so important because it'll just get us to a spot where we can actually think about how do we fund these additional expenses.
Hey, Craig, the other thing I just wanted to mention, because I know we haven't talked about it much at all because it's pretty much taken a backseat, but I'd be remiss as the building chair that I didn't bring up the fact that, you know, so the public knows, we're not meeting our state mandated requirement for capital improvements to the buildings, which is 2% of our operating budget in order to qualify for housing aid, which is the state aid that we can leverage for improvements to our schools, which right now is around Sarah, 40%, 44% that we get back from the state on all improvements. So we were very thin last year. I think we got a couple hundred thousand dollars. But, and we've just received our stage one approval from RIDE, which means that we have to get to stage two in a very difficult timeframe. And stage two is the point where it's sort of the meat and potatoes of figuring out what we do with our buildings moving forward. But I don't want to see it drop off the list. I know it's difficult this year, but I just want the public to understand that this budget has zero for capital. Once again, because, you know, we've had a number of years, we've had zero. Life goes on, the buildings deteriorate whether COVID goes on or not. Our facilities are not going to get any better while this crisis goes on or not. So I just, this is the predicament we're in, right? We know we need additional funding for the health issues. We know we have this background context. But it's a real problem that we need to start to keep our, continue to keep our eye on the ball on the capital side. And I got to somehow keep the building committee moving in the direction and also educate the public on the fact that we can't delay this effort forever. I don't know how that $250 million bond's going to get affected, probably not because it's already appropriated. But there was some originally talk about another $250 million bond for buildings coming out. I would highly doubt, this is just speculation, but I would highly doubt in the current context that a budget, Mr. Pearson's correct. They're going to be scooping money and looking for ways to fill the big bucket of hold that's in the state budget. So I can't imagine they're going to want to float a bond in these times. So I'm putting that out there, but I just want the public to know that that is still an issue. And, you know, we're going to have to continue after this budget cycle to keep our eye on that ball.
That brings up a related question. Good, my mic's on. Last year, the town allocated $200,000 for this year's budget. Are we rolling that over into next year? Do we spend that already?
So that's actually a good question. We had planned on doing HVAC work in the spring, mostly at the high school, so we are actually waiting on some plans back from the company, ATC, who we had been working with. But I just spoke with Mr. Martin today and said, we might actually need to hold off on that right now. You know, we really need to make some of those HVAC improvements at the high school. But if we find out that there are requirements that need to be done to the building, that's really our only bucket of money that we have right now. So luckily, we hadn't really gotten started on it. Unfortunately, it's just pushing another can down the road because that work needed to be done and it was far overdue for being done. And we had hoped that we would make some real progress this year with it. So that, in short, that 200,000 is technically available still, although we had planned on investing it back in mostly the high school right now. So, but as
Very disappointing to hear HVAC projects on hold. It's unfortunate, but I understand why. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, everyone. So are there any hands raised?
There are none. There are no hands raised.
Is that clock chiming an omen?
Well, this may be, I know it's being recorded. Will this be available on the website?
Yes, it will be posted.
I'm sorry, guys. I don't see a hand raising feature.
Is that Kimberly?
Yeah, I just, I don't see a hand.
If you click the participant button, it should show up on the right end of your screen. But
And then it's at the bottom of the, of everybody who's on DM. Yeah, everybody's, and then you can, and then at the bottom of the bar, there's a mute me, invite, mute me or raise hand function.
I just feel, I'm going to raise my hand.
Okay.
Well, only because I feel that a lot of people probably want to raise their hand whether they agree with me or follow on the other side. But, you know, right now, people are out of work.
Oh, 12 Kingswood Drive. In your address, please.
Yes, Kimberly Shockley, 12 Kingswood Drive. You know, as I think about moving forward and, you know, I'm not positive what my employment situation will be later. Houses go on the market in my neighborhood and are basically sold within weeks. And so I understand why my house value went up. It's because I live in a town that people want to move to, which I think is great. If something happens to my job, I can't send my kids to private school, because we're not succeeding as a school system. As much as I want my roads to be nicer, I want a better sidewalk, need a good school system. It's part of why my house is, it's part of why I live here, I'm a huge proponent of public school. And now that I've been dealing more intimately with my children's teachers, I'm even the larger proponent of public school. I work full-time and teach elementary school right now. If my kids' teachers weren't so actively involved in this, my kids would be failing. I would be failing them. So I do hope as we move forward, the school committee and town council, if they choose to raise the budget, really market themselves, really put out a PR campaign behind this budget, and explain to people, instead of waiting until after, like we did last year, explain to them before. Because once parents got out and voted last year, the budget passed, but we failed it first, and we lost students, and it made it harder that second time around, and it made it harder for this year. So that's all I really wanted to say, is just market yourselves. If you have the budget that you've worked hard on, make sure people know that. And like I said, you have a more captive audience than you've ever had in parents right now, because we're all trying to figure out how to get through this, and the school system's helping us. So I hope that's noticed. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly. I couldn't agree more with you that the schools are helping all of us get through this. So
Kim, I'll just say that I agree with you. I think there's a lot of misunderstanding out there, even on the, you mentioned the revaluation. Everyone automatically assumes if their house value goes up, that the taxes are going to go up. And that's not necessarily true. It's based on the total bucket of money they receive, and typically, it's about a third, third of the lower house values. You know, that's a third, a third, a third. So basically, some will remain the same, a third, typically, some go up and some go down based on the tax rate per thousand. But there seems to be a lot of dialogue about automatically going up, and that's not the case. This contract that we're voting on, I've seen comments like, just vote no. Well, you know, just, people need to understand that just voting no is maybe counteractive to those just know, just know people, because a lot of those no people want no increase. Well, if you want less of an increase, you would be voting for this contract, because it results in a cut. It's not approving an increase. So I do think, you know, education is a big thing. It's difficult with the timeframes and also what we have going on, but I think you all agree, we need to get the message out. And part of it is, hopefully, people look at the recordings and look at these meetings, but also turning to your neighbors and saying, hey, you know, this is going to be available. Hey, you may want to watch this meeting on what's going on. We appreciate the comments.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Murray. I don't see any other hands raised. I'm looking, but I don't see anybody.
There are no other hands.
What's your pleasure, school committee? We, Mr. Florio, did you have anything to say? I saw your screen light up.
Oh. Madam Chair, I just want to reiterate what Mr. Levis said, in the impact of us not getting the 1.8 million. That if schools don't open, then what happens? And it's those individuals that he wants to hire, it's not federal money. It's the way Mr. Levis said. It's money we need for the safety of our children. And, you know, I have a lot of constituents who are parents, and they have high praise for our teachers. And I haven't heard many, I haven't heard anybody, because I'm sheltered in the house, I don't hear much. But what I, I never see anybody say vote no in Oak Haven or in any of the neighborhoods I represent. Most people, most people that I know are supportive of teachers and are supportive of education, particularly right now, because they're actually seeing how hard the teachers work. And I agree with you, Madam Chair, we have some of the best teachers in the state of Rhode Island, and I agree with Mr. Levis that we need money to continue our mission. And that's all I have to say. Thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Florio. Unless we see anybody else raise their hand, which I don't see anybody. Unless there, just one final question. Does anyone on the call from the school committee or from administration, teachers, anybody want to make any final remarks?
Yeah, I just want to let the community know that we will post this on our website, that it's being recorded in, Mr. Murphy will post this recording on our website, hopefully tomorrow, it'll be up and posted. I think at some point, we're going to try to post it in the cloud, whether we do YouTube or not, but it will be posted for the community to watch. So I just want to thank everybody for joining. And I'll take this as a positive sign that, you know, I know Kimberly had mentioned about the public relations, and what I've learned is that, you know, just trying to be honest and transparent and remind the community that last year, we wrote a letter to the community, Ms. Manjrielli actually wrote the letter, but our names were on it, and we encouraged the community to reach out to us if they have any questions. So I'll end by saying that, that if anybody has questions, they're not comfortable, all they have to do is email, call me, and we'll get back to them with an answer. So this will be posted tomorrow on our website. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Levis. Thank you all for tuning in and being part of this Zoom community. That being said, I think we could schedule the next meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, what's the date of the next meeting?
It's Thursday of this week, 5/14. Looks like 6 o'clock.
Okay. Madam Chair, I make a motion that the next meeting of the school committee, oh, should I make a mo, okay. Madam Chair, I make a motion that the next meeting of the school committee be scheduled for Thursday, May 14 at 6:00 p.m.
I second the motion. Right. You all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. That looks like a five to zero vote. And is there a motion to adjourn? I have 7:13.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to adjourn at 7:13 p.m.
I second the motion. You all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Thank you, everyone. Motion carries five to zero. We'll see you hopefully on Thursday. God willing.
See you on Thursday, Madam Chair. God willing.
Thank you.